It is seven o'clock and this meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we begin this evening, like you, we are all deeply saddened by the events that took place unfolded at Appalachia High School in Georgia yesterday. The loss of life that took place is truly a senseless tragedy and our thoughts and prayers are with all who have been personally impacted. During a time like this, it is only natural to think of our own students and school families. Schools should and must be a place where students and staff feel completely safe and secure. We want to assure each of you that we share your concern regarding such tragedies and we are fil- filigant and proactive here in the Rockwood School District in all areas, especially where the safety of our students and staff are concerned. We have multiple safety protocols and measures in place to protect our students, staff, and visitors. You will hear more about those protocols in a safety presentation this evening. Reports that in that school resource officers at Appalachia High School acted swiftly in apprehending the shooter yesterday. This is precisely why we have cultivated strong partnerships with our local law enforcement and officials and we have worked with them closely to ensure that our schools are secure. It is also why we hired four school safety officers of our own last year. Again, you will hear more about that in the report. We know that children and teens will process this news in different ways. Counselors are available at each of our school buildings to assist students who may need some extra support. We strongly encourage any student to stop by their school's counseling office at any time. Please be assured that the Rockwood School District has the safety and well-being of students, staff, and visitors in mind at all times. We will continue to work together to make sure that our procedures for preventing a situation such as this are strong as possible and that everyone is protected during their time at school. Please join me in extending our thoughts, prayers, and deepest sympathies to the community of Winder, Georgia. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you all. And I welcome you to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting. Thanks. We will start with a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Next is the motion to approve the Board of Education work session meeting minutes for August thirteenth, 2024.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those who support this motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next is the motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes for August fifteenth, 2024.
Motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please signify by yes if or if you're opposed, tell me that too.
Yes.
Yes. Alright. Do we have any patron comments tonight? I think we may have superintendent comments.
We in fact do, thank you President Midyet. All four high schools in the Rockwood School District are ranked among the top six percent in Missouri and the top twelve percent of all public schools in the country, according to U.S. News and World Report's two thousand and twenty-four Best U.S. High Schools list. Eureka High School, Lafayette High School, Marquette High School, and Rockwood Summit are also ranked in the top four percent in the state in the U.S. News and World Report's College Readiness Index. Thank you to all of our students, our staff, our families, and our communities for all of your hard work and support and the dedication to making Rockwood continue to be a very, very special place to both learn and to grow. That definitely deserves a round of applause. Representatives from more than ninety institutions of higher learning, branches of the military, and trade schools will be in attendance at this year's Rockwood slash Parkway Regional College Fair, which will take place from six o'clock to seven thirty on Monday, September ninth at the Recplex at Queenie Park, which is in Ballin. The fair is open to any student in the St. Louis region or area specifically and gives students the opportunity to meet with representatives from post-secondary institutions and explore their futures. Students can register for the fair before they go at strivefair.com and check with their school's college and career center for additional information. This is just a reminder and a heads up to our community that Rockwood will conduct a test of emergency notification system on the evening, again, the evening of Thursday, September twelfth, for our families. Again, that is the evening of September twelfth. That's again, a Thursday. We want to be sure that our community members are informed of school cancellations due to inclement weather or in case of emergency. The annual test is our automatic notification system and it helps us to ensure that Rockwood has accurate contact information for families and for staff members. A phone message will be sent as a part of the test, followed by a text and that, I'm sorry, and the Parents Square app notification and email message as well. So, visit rsdmo.org for more about how to make sure your contact information is in fact up to date. President Midyet spoke to the tragedy that occurred in Georgia and we are going to have a school safety plan update this evening. If you remember our last Board of Education meeting, as we went through a review of the upcoming agenda, it was always going to be a part of the meeting that was scheduled for this evening. Within that report, you're going to hear about our annual district crisis planning meeting. And that is an annual component. It's already a component that has been embedded and built into what we've been doing as a school district for years. This remains a priority for us as a school district. And before the presentation, Dr. Godwin, Mr. Dennis, I will not steal all of your thunder, but I just want to extend another round of thanks and appreciation for our first responder community and how well we've been able to continue to partner, work together, and collaborate to continue to make sure that we're as safe as we possibly can be in our schools and in our communities as well. It's hard to believe, but it's been a fantastic first three weeks of school. We have more than three weeks to go, students, any of you that are listening, but it's been a fantastic first three weeks of school in the Rockwood School District this year. And I've been to buildings and all, all over our district and are just over one hundred and fifty square miles. And I've been very, very encouraged by what I've been able to see. So, our students are excited to learn, our staff members are thrilled and truly energized to help them reach their full potential, and we are all excited to partner with our families for another great year here in the Rockwood School District. So, here's a video with some scenes from that very first day of school, which was on August nineteenth.
This is the best.
I have been everywhere from pre-K all the way through high school today, the first day here in the Rockwood School District, and I want you to know, we are off to an amazing start. Thank you to all of our parents, to all of our caregivers, to all of our students, to all of our staff, all of our community members. We're off to an amazing start here in the Rockwood School District. I truly believe that two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five is going to be a school year where we focus on our promise. And that promise always lies within the interest of our students. I can't wait to see what the future holds and I'm excited that we're going to get there together. Have a great day. This all happened, thank you very much.
So, the, my board comment tonight is, and I told Curtis this earlier, there's a fantastic video and fantastic music. So, he did a great job on that. If you haven't watched the, the Promise, uh, I don't know what the technical name for that is, but it is, is, makes you wanna, makes you wanna cry. So, great job. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we will move to eight point zero one, the approval of the consent agenda items, eight point zero two through eight point four six. The motion is to approve the consent items, consent agenda as items as submitted. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah? I do have one that I want to pull out.
Thank you.
And that is the public, I have my notes here, on the public gifts. We want to give a, a thank you out to the Falcon Football Boosters. They donated two scholarships and the amount, total amount of fifteen hundred dollars, which is just amazing for their students. And then also to the Missouri Center for Arthopedics and Advanced Sports Medicine for their donation of twenty-five hundred to help support their football team this year. So, thank you to the patrons in our district that are supporting our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mumberg. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted passes. And I think it's time for nine point zero one, school safety plan update. With Dr. Goodwin, Godwin, Ty Dennis.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Paul Godwin. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Supervision for Elementary Education and I have the privilege and honor to work with this guy right here over the safety and security of the Rockwood School District. Obviously, it's a, a big commitment and a super important task that we have and Ty here is going to lead us through our safety update.
Good evening. For those that don't know, I'm Tyrone Dennis, I'm the district safety supervisor and this is our safety update for two thousand twenty-four. Our six areas of focus of safety and security is personnel, physical safety, protocols, training, social and emotional security, and our communication. We try to focus on these things every day. Safety is not a fly-by-night thing here in this district. I'm in year five and every day we're focusing on safety, not just when something happens. And so, we try to stay as best prepared as we can and keep everyone informed as best we can. My title has changed. It says Safety Director, but it's District Safety Supervisor. Last year, we added the four SSO, School Safety Officers, and we hit a home run. The ask of the parents was what are we doing for elementary? And so, when Dr. Kane came, made the suggestion and we were able to get the four safety officers, a hundred plus years of experience, they are rock stars. Each one of them occupy a quadrant. Their assignment, basically, they bounce around all day and we don't want anybody to know their schedule. We don't want them to have a set schedule so that they're prepared for anything. And so, we added them to the thirteen school resource officers that we already had, which makes us have seventeen officers, eighteen, including myself, for the entire district. And so, we're able to respond to any type of emergencies, emergencies or calls that come out. We have a crisis response teams that are in place, school counselors, social workers, social, emotional behavior specialists, behavior support departments. All these things are put in place for a reason. Whenever there's an incident, we are responding from all facets in reference to our school resource officers, the picture that you see. We have men and women from five different police jurisdictions. We're in close contact with them anytime there's an emergency or any type of, anything that goes on, we're in constant contact. I have several group chats throughout upper management, trying to communicate with everybody to keep everybody informed and how it affects everybody because it affects each department differently. Our physical safety, we have secured entrances. We are technically kind of locked down all day. You have to be buzzed into all of our schools to gain access. A lot of people remember back, we used to go visit your teacher and just walk in. Those days are over. It doesn't work like that. We have a crisis call center. They added the color-coded signage and arrows, which helps direct people when they're in our buildings because our, some of our buildings are huge and when you get there, it can look like a maze. And so, it helps direct where you are and helps law enforcement in case of emergency to locate exactly where the situation is. We added safety barricaded, safety glass film, and our nine-one-one alert system, Siren GPS is awesome. It basically, anytime a nine-one-one call goes out in reference to any of our buildings, we get an alert, which helps us know what we have and we basically vet each call. By doing that, we're able to find out what is needed if, and we're able to find out if it's something that's super important or not. And a lot of times, sometimes we would look at the call and think that it's just nothing, but then when you call to our first responders, they would let us know, well, there's something more than that. And then I'm able to alert, uh, upper management about what is needed and how we need to respond to it. Our visitor management systems, we added school pass last year, two years ago, in reference to sex offenders. We had a parent that posed me with the question, do we know if sex offenders are in our building? And at the time, I'm like, we don't. And so, we put it in motion to have a system to check that. So, every time someone comes in our building, they have to sign in and it's basically running them to do a sex offender database. And sometimes we have to exclude people and that's what the system is in place for. We also have intruder alarms, our two-way communication, uh, security cameras, and multi-layer cybersecurity. We're always trying to update these things, intruder safety. We just went through training in August for the entire district and we're also conducting it at Central Office, just trying to keep everyone updated on safety. These are our five police jurisdictions and these are also our four fire police, uh, fire jurisdictions. And we are, we have great relationships with them. Dr. Godwin being new, we've basically been introducing him, making sure that everybody know who he is. I've been here now five years, I have everybody on speed dial. They have been nothing but cooperative from day one. They never, uh, any information that needs to be shared, they make sure that we have it and make sure that we're up to date on anything. Our district crisis planning, we're always going over that, school crisis planning. We just had incident command meetings with all of our police and fire, as well as our principals at all our buildings and basically making sure everybody's on the same page. We learned a lot from the Marquette incident. That was a great, even though it was a, a scary time, we learned from what we went through and tried to make our district better. Emergency drills, each building basically goes through emergency drills and practice monthly. That's a must in our district, supervision of schools, mental health resources, and then our community partners. We try to make sure that our relationships are top-notch. We want to be able to communicate and make sure that they have whatever information they need from us and vice versa. Training. So, our intruder training basically became option-based this year. And what we mean by option-based is basically giving our students and staff options on what to do in a case of emergency. When we're dealing with an intruder, we're basically dealing with a ghost and we don't know what's coming. And so, we want our students and staff to be prepared to make a decision at that time for themselves, what's best for them to make during that time, and that's what the training taught. We actually put the training on it ourselves with our SROs and SSOs and our staff because we basically, last year, we trained, what is it, forty staff? We trained forty staff members last year and then we trained forty more staff members this year. And the goal is to keep training as many trainers as we can. So, in each building, they have multiple trainers along with the safety staff that will assist them. But having more people know what to do, as a police officer, you resort back to your training. And so, we want our staff to be trained as well to understand what they need to do in the case of emergency. CERT training and our health response with all of that, we basically, community response, community emergency response, annual employees trainings, we constantly go through that and then stop the bleed CPR training was something that we implemented last year with Metro West, which basically taught our students, our staff, how to deal with wounds. Usually, that's probably the most important training that we receive because that's something that you can apply to your everyday life. When you're cooking, you may cut your finger, something like that, or hurt yourself in your house, and these are different training that you receive to be able to apply that. What?
I think one of the biggest things that came from our intruder training this year was every school does DoorDash, Uber Eats. And so, one of the things that we came up with is anyone can show up with a bag of food and a drink. And so, you, what you will find at almost every school that I've been to this year, I can tell you the elementary schools for sure, there is a place outside of those buildings that delivery people are not getting in the doors. They're set the food there. And so, we have systems in place within those schools where the teachers, if they decide to order, they're notifying, notifying office staff, so they're expecting those phone calls or those, the doorbell. So, it's just another precaution that's put in place that really came about from that internal conversation with our, with our folks.
Social, emotional, security staff and students, our parent universities, second step, character education pathways, wellness center, restorative practices, and codes of conduct. I don't really deal with that, that much. So, that's not really my wheelhouse. Uh, we have our crisis workshop coming up at the end of the month. It's a great time for us to partner with our local fire and police here in this room and discuss what we're, we've established and work scenarios with them moving forward. This helps create the partnership. It's not a us and them, it's us. A lot of our police and fire, they have children in the district and it's a, I enjoy doing it every year just because we get to hear feedback from them and we can apply it to what we have to do to it as, as a school district. It affects us a little different. Parents Square is a communication system that we use to get messaging out. Rockwood Connect, our district school website, that's Mary. Social media, social media monitoring. Anytime we get threats and tips like that, we follow up. Every threat is followed up in this district. Sometimes it happens late, sometimes it happens on the weekend, but every threat is taken serious and we try to vet and do everything that we can, not only in-house, but with local law enforcement, um, to follow up on it. We, we can't afford to take it as it's just a joke or anything like that. We have to take it seriously. So, uh, we also have our ten steps to crisis and communications. Any questions?
I actually have a comment. I'm amazed, I live in the Lafayette quadrant. Every time I leave my home, obviously, there's Babla right out, one oh, you know, one oh nine, and I see one of the security cars there. And if I have to go to Lafayette, I see them there as well. And it's, it's amazing to me, they are available almost at every school and it is different times of the day. It's not, you know, a set time. And it, as a parent, I do feel safer having them there. And if it's not our security team, it's always an SRO. So, thank you for that.
I'd also like to make a comment. Fifty-nine years ago Saturday, I started kindergarten. And our biggest threat then was what's the direction to get out of the building for the fire alarm or the direction to the fallout shelter? The world is very different today, which is very unfortunate, but what is fortunate is the way you and your team have handled it here in Rockwood. I, I can't think of a more professional and more engaging group of people than what you have working with you here in this organization, both of you and the way you've handled it. I have nothing but compliments to say to you and your team. You guys are fantastic. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I wanted to add a couple of comments to, three things that you said tonight that really resonated, especially in, in light of what's happened recently. One is that you're proactive. You're not reactive, you're putting things into place that really protect our students, our staff, all of our staff, and that you're integrated resources. We're not trying to do this alone, that we're really a community-based, everybody's working together, and that you have ongoing training. It's not a one and done, but this is something we do constantly to be ready for whatever comes our way. So, again, thank you so much for all you do.
With every incident that happens, we try to learn from their incidents and how does that affect us as a district? We don't want to, you can't wait till the day of the game to start preparing for the game. And so, all these different things, something happens somewhere for it to go into effect. Like I said previously, Marquette incident, we learned a lot, both days, we learned a lot and we try to learn from it. We try not to look at the, we looked at the bad and put different protocols in place to try to make it better.
Ty, thank you for all you do. One thing that I've shared and I've been privy to with my PTO work through the years is, one thing I've learned as a parent is when a crisis happens, do not go to the school. That's your instinct as a parent, is to go to your kid. What are we doing to train our parents and our families? I'm thinking one oh nine, clogging up one oh nine when we need to get fire trucks and ambulance if, God forbid, something happened at Eureka High School, I'm using that as an example. Are we communicating with our PTO liaisons? What are we doing to help our parents become aware that that's probably something that we should think about?
Great question. Immediately, I'm reaching out to Mary's back, Dr. Kane and our upper cabinet members, giving them the information in which they need and speaking with local law enforcement on what they need. And as we do that, we're trying to share as much information as we can so parents aren't responding that way. Most parents, I got kids in the district too, I want to know if my baby is okay. Well, with sharing some of that information, it can calm some of the fears and we're trying to give communication on where you can reunite with your kid. I think that with Marquette happened, our other law enforcement had to block Clarkson. As they blocked Clarkson, traffic is backed all the way up to the interstate. Well, we had to get buses from the interstate to get them to Marquette to get the kids out. And so, that communication is key and Mary does a great job in providing information, you're getting the alerts, Parents Square on the phone and different things like that. And so, that's what I mean when I say that when we communicate, it affects different departments in different ways. And so, that information is vital to share so that she can do her job and we want law enforcement to be able to do what they need to do without, if, if one oh nine is backed up, they can't get to the problem. And so, we try to share as much information with parents as we, we get it. And a lot of time, it's real time, it's happening. And so, And so some things we don't know at that time, but we're trying to respond as quick as possible.
Again, I want to echo what others have said about your leadership and the team you have put together, and Paul, and your work that you're doing is fantastic, and hear nothing but compliments wherever I go, people that I talk to. But I just have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you tell me a little bit more about options-based response training? Just, just a snapshot.
Great question. Option-based training is, is basically during a threat or intruder situation, what are your options? A, can I run and get out of this building? If, if the threat is happening over there and I have access to a door to exit the building, do so. If I can't, I don't know where the threat is. I may have to bunker down in place, barricade myself in. Elementary school looks different from high school.
Right.
If I'm a kindergarten teacher, it might be difficult for me to get thirty-five-year-olds out the building, so we want them to have options. What we learned in our intruder training is a lot of the staff or students would just bunker in place, and we don't want them to think like that. We want them to have their mind open to, you have an option to go. The other option is if you can't do those, don't just sit there. You might have to find stuff to throw at this person. We're not telling you to become John Wick or anything. We just, we're saying, do something that whatever you're doing may provide time for you to get out or for others to get to you. And so we try to provide that, that's option-based. We're not expecting people to do things out of their wheelhouse. I think that some people may not be mobile enough to exit. Well, that, we might need to be grabbing stuff, blocking that door so that person can't get in. That's option-based.
So it's, it's similar to the four E training?
It's all the same, different acronyms. Four E, run, hide, fight, Alice, all of these, the same, the same things, just different acronyms.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Nine point zero two, is adoption of the Board of Education meeting minutes. The motion is to approve the Board of Education meeting calendar for August through December twenty twenty-five and January through July twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have one question. I'm looking at October of twenty twenty-five. Do we know the MSB dates? Because that would fall the same. Okay, so they have moved, I got it, I see it now, thanks.
Yep.
Just want to, because this year would have fallen on that week. Thanks.
Right, yep, I checked with them. Those are the dates for twenty twenty-five.
Any further discussion? So again, the motion is to approve the Board of Educat, whoops, that's not right. Motion to, the motion is to approve the Board of Education meeting, meeting calendar for August through December twenty twenty-five and January through July twenty twenty-six. All in favor, signify by yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Nine point zero three, we have an update from the COPE Committee chaired by Director Rumberg.
All right, the COPE Committee met on August the twenty-eighth. Thank you, Mrs. Pack, for taking such copious notes for all of us and doing that for us. First thing we did is we discussed the Student Advisory Committee, and we met tonight, any of you that were here and had the opportunity, what an astounding group of students. They, they were articulate, they were honest, and deeply shared their, their thoughts and concerns for the good, the bad, and the ugly in the district, and that's what we wanted to hear, was their voices. So we were very glad to do that, and we'll continue to have those ongoing meetings and give feedback to the community and to the C-SIP plan. Do you want to take? I'll do the next part, then you can do community engagement. Oh, am I the only one that's got the notes? Okay, all right. We talked, so that we did that. So we talked about community engagement, and again, that's the whole purpose of the, of the COPE Committee. And so we talked about how to strategically plan engagement with the community, and there was a lot of discussion about attending strategic planned community engagement meetings and aligning our student advisory to the C-SIP, which is what, one of our first steps to do, and that we would continue to focus our COPE Committee meetings along with the C-SIP planning. And then we had some discussion around annual presentations to make sure that we are representing across the district, and our theme this year is going to be focused around transitions because we are going through a year of transition as we move into looking at a new C-SIP plan. So it will be student-focused, staff-focused, all with the transitions from grade level to grade level, school to school, community to community, and so lots of transitions that go on within our district.
And we also talked about onboarding. How do we?
Yes.
How do we onboard our new staff members as well?
Correct. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, COPE stands for Community Communications Outreach and Public Engagement Committee. Any further discussion about that? Any other comments? Next is the proposed agenda for the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting, which is up on the screen. Two weeks, two weeks from today? And finally, for the, this open session, we have ten point zero two, future agenda presentations and events to attend. Yeah, our calendar's been busy, and it's not going to be, stop being busy. I think next week, there is the crisis workshop, is that next week? The eleven? No, next week is, following, next week is C-SIP and the presence forum. Right, yeah, okay. So it's, it continues to be a busy time of the year, but I sincerely appreciate the engagement of every one of, every one of the board members to get out and be doing things and being part of what happens in the district. So typically, we would be at the adjournment stage, but we're going back into closed session. So I the open meetings adjourned?